It's good.
All right. Wel- welcome back, commissioners. And back to you, Chair Harrington.
Yeah, it's like a salad for a sandwich.
Hello, I am, I am just enjoying a bit of Commissioner Willie's cookie from lunch.
Peanut butter.
Uh peanut butter, it's quite delicious. So, welcome back to the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington along with Commissioners Roy Rogers and Jerry Willie in the room, Commissioner Phi online, thank you. And we have four items before us this afternoon, and they are all under the same department. Aren't we lucky? So, welcome, Director Steven Roberts, you are here for the afternoon.
I am.
Have spare seats and mics over there.
That's right, yeah, lots of room to spread out today, thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate the accommodation. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Steven Roberts, as you said, Director of LUT, and I'm joined by Sherry Gray, who's our Program Coordinator in our Operations and Maintenance Division, and one of her main tasks is uh shepherding our Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee and the Rural Roads Oper- Rural Roads Operations and Maintenance Advisory Committee. Mouthful. Um, and we're here today to talk to you about some, uh, a proposed member appointment and some reappointments uh for the Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee, and then bylaw changes relative to both of those committees that would actually reduce the membership, and Sherry will walk us through that. Um, one thought that we, Sherry and I were just talking, one thought we actually had, would, would you mind if we actually took those two items in reverse order?
Not at all, go right ahead.
Is that, is that something we can accommodate?
Yeah.
Just a minute to open the presentation.
Not that it makes any difference, but why did you want to do that?
What's that?
Not that it makes any difference, but why did you want to do that?
Oh, well, we were just thinking about maybe discussing the bylaw changes helps inform the appointment discussion a little bit. It is, uh, bylaw revisions?
Should be item four, labeled in there.
Yep.
Okay, here we are, okay. Um, I'll begin. So, uh, ROMAC and ERMDAC have both had a problem with uh chron- chronic vacancies on both committees, and we've, we've attempted a lot of recruitment. And um, the members that we have are, they're solid, they're committed, um, and they assist in that current recruitment, but we've not been successful in filling the twelve-member um committee for ROMAC and the ten-member committee for ERMDAC. So, uh, I spoke with both chairs of both committees, and uh they brought it to their committees for a vote to reduce the numbers of both rosters to, not just reduce the number to nine, but also because nine is an odd number which both committees felt was a better idea for a number of members. So that's the proposal, is to uh reduce each committee to nine members. Thank you, Steven. And uh so that also means that we need to change the bylaws. Um, the number of members is uh referred to twice in each set of bylaws under Article Three Membership, and you have a copy of those in your board packet. And there are a, a couple of other additional cleanup edits within the bylaws as well. Just grammatical items, nothing of, of content. So that's the entire presentation.
Okay, folks, so this is just the presentation to take us through the bylaw revisions, and if we are comfortable with them, then they will come back to the board on a consent agenda item for adoption. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
No, we've actually, um, I'm on Rural Roads, of course, and we've had a presentation on, on this as well, so pretty well briefed, thank you.
I saw a thumbs up from Commissioner Phi. I'm from thumbs up then too, so is Commissioner Rogers, so we're good to go on those.
Terrific.
Well, thank you. Then we'll back up to item number three then, the appointments and reappointments for ERMDAC. And I'll let Sherry give you a quick rundown on that.
Thank you. Um, so, thank you very much for allowing us to reverse those, because now we can consider the appointments and reappointments in the view of having the reduced number of vacancies. I mean, reduced number of members and vacancies, look at it that way. So, ROMAC has no reappointments and no new members this term. However, ERMDAC has three, uh, three, we had three members' term terms expire that chose not to continue. We had three members' terms expire that chose to be reappointed, because it was the end of their first term. Uh, and so those are Melissa Laird, Dick Steinbergie, and Joe Wisnewski. And then we have a new member, Pete Parmenter, uh, who is requesting to be appointed this term.
So commissioners, do you have any questions uh with regard to the recommendation to to follow through in reappointing the three current members and then appointing the new member, Peter Parmenter? Otherwise, everybody thumbs up?
We're good.
Okay, we're good to go.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, see you on Consent Agenda.
Right.
Next, we're gonna talk about significant natural resource work. And here we come, our subject matter experts. You all have brought us on this journey step by step by step, and so I know you're going to remind us where we're at now and where we're hoping to go. So please, thank you for joining us and take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and members of the board. My name is Erin Wardell, I'm the Planning and Development Services Manager, and I'm joined by Michelle Miller, Senior Planner, who will be covering our presentation materials today. Thank you. Once we have our slides up.
So good to see everyone this afternoon. My name's Michelle Miller, I'm a Senior Planner in the Community Planning Section of Planning and Development Services. I'm here today to present you an information on our Limited Goal Five program update. So today will be a short refresher on the background and an overview of the Significant Natural Resources, a focused look at fish and wildlife habitat. And we'll dive into a bit of the details of where we are with the project, and to speak about the important pe- pieces of community engagement work that we are doing, and highlight some of the next steps. So the reason we're doing this is to keep you informed about the status of the initial work as that of the work that we're doing, and sharing information about several planned community events um that we're holding this month. And we want to answer any questions that you may have about our project. So a brief refresher on the background of why we're updating the Goal Five Inventory and developing new regulations at this time. Since the nineteen seventies, the foundation of statewide planning goals uh program for land use planning in Oregon has been nineteen statewide planning goals. They're focusing on statewide planning Goal Five. It requires local governments to identify and protect significant natural resources areas. It also affects other resources like scenic and historic areas, but our focus is on natural resources. The Oregon Administrative Rules outline this process for how we comply with statewide planning Goal Five. And we adopted our Goal Five Planning Program with an inventory and regulations in the nineteen eighties, and they followed the older O- Oregon Administrative Rules, or OARs. So since that time, the Goal Five Rules have changed, along with important changes in state law. In twenty seventeen, the legislature expanded the requirement for land use regulations to be clear and objective when they applied to all housing development, not just needed housing, and on all land, not just buildable land. This change in state law impacted our natural resource regulations as they were found not to be clear and objective. As a result, our natural resource regulations have been under legal scrutiny. We adopted regulations in twenty twenty to address that state law clear and objective requirement, but those standards were appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and then remanded back to the county for further changes. In May of this year, the Land Use, uh, the Land Use Conservation and Development Commission ruled that because our natural resources regulations were not clear and objective, we are out of compliance with Goal Five. So this LCDC enforcement order directs us to make changes to our regulations by October first, twenty twenty-four, and they've also issued a stay on development that may affect wildlife habitat, a type of county natural resource regulation, I mean, natural resource, until those new regulations are adopted. So we had some work sessions last year where you approved a plan to have about an eighteen-month process to address the remand following those Goal Five requirements. Throughout that process, with the help of an experienced consultant team, we'll be updating our wildlife habitat areas in the urban unincorporated areas, and developing clear and objective standards for our natural resources. So turning to our project, a focused look at fish and wildlife habitat, we're taking a focused look at two types of Goal Five natural resources, fish and wildlife habitat, or sometimes known as riparian habitat and upland wildlife habitat. This is our homepage for the project website, where people can get information on the project, sign up for updates, get some background on Goal Five with an, uh, frequently asked question, and see the project timeline and scope. So along with our consultant team, we've established a technical advisory committee that will help us throughout this project. It includes a group of subject matter experts, including staff from state agencies and local agencies, um, two planning commissioners, environmental advocates, and representatives from the development community. We've been providing updates to the planning commission, and are working hard to ensure there's broad community outreach throughout this process. So the Goal Five process is outlined in the State Oregon Administrative Rules, and these gra- this graphic shows the main steps and our general timeline for accomplishing these steps. So beginning with the inventory steps where the natural resources are identified. Because we're doing an update, we don't necessarily need to start at the beginning, um, and at this board's direction, our process starts at the determination of significance phase, and I'll give you a bit more details on that process um later on in this presentation. As our inventory work is complete, we'll move on to step two, the ESEE analysis, or the show your work phase, and we'll identify the major types of land uses that could conflict with the natural resources and do some analysis. This analysis, called the ESEE, which stands for Economic, Social, Environmental, and Energy Analysis, considers the positive and negative impacts of allowing, limiting, or prohibiting conflicting land uses within the Significant Natural Resource Area through the various lenses of each of those ESEE categories. And finally, we'll be looking at our, um, taking that analysis and weighing and balancing those impacts, and developing the policies and regulations that make up our Goal Five program. And so here's the rough timeline um that shows um uh our project schedule, and it, you can see that it has some overlap and um is a bit iterative of, of what we're doing. The first, um, the bulk of the time is spent on our inventory process. And our first in-person community forum will be a week from today, October twenty-fourth. We'll be on hand with large maps, so people can see the draft, updated inventory, and gets a sense of where we have identified these natural resources and get comments on that. And then there's also a corresponding online open house that'll run from this Friday through November tenth, where people can also see the maps online and look up different properties, and then kind of make comments as, as needed. So there'll be another community forum, the second one, um, this winter in early twenty twenty-four. And finally, there'll be public hearings um next summer with a board adopting the regulations by due date of October first, twenty twenty-four. So moving on to some of the details of the inventory process, this map shows the urban area of Washington County with its tan colors showing the incorporated areas or city areas um in the urban area, and the blue and orange encompassing the urban unincorporated area or our general study area. The blue areas are where we call the map refinement area, and we're doing the bulk of our mapping here, and our, um, and that was an analysis, and we're, and that was part of our original inventory work um that we did in the nineteen eighties. And then those orange areas, or the new community plan areas, where cities have done some of the, the Goal Five planning work, um, that will also be included in our update. Here's some of the terms that we'll be using to describe our natural resources that, uh, um, that will be included in our inventory maps. The habitat is the place where plant and animal species live and grow, and we have two types of those, riparian, which includes the streams and the water areas, and those adjacent to the streams and water areas. And then the upland habitat generally goes beyond that riparian habitat, and then can include some forest patches that also provide habitat. So here was our starting point for the inventory, and it's a comparison of the county and the metro maps of the Significant Natural Resources for the Bethany area, um, which is the unincorporated area north of Highway twenty-six, um, that's seen a lot of development in the past forty years. So our county's Significant Natural Resources map is on the left with the water-related um habitat in blue and the wildlife habitat in green. The metro map to the right, um, done about twenty years later, shows um the upland in green and the riparian in shades of blue. And so the metro maps also uh classify the habitat based on the quality, which the county's maps don't include. And so our consultant team has worked to combine these maps through our ArcGIS system, um, so we have one consolidated map to look at the Significant Natural Resources. So using those maps on the previous screen, um, within our map refinement area, our consultant combined the data in both of the maps into one map. And then adjustments were made to take out areas that have been developed or where natural resources are better defined, identified through the development review process. And then we conducted a manual review and cleaned up the data where it was needed. And finally, uh, we'll be incorporating the city community plan data for areas added to the urban growth boundary since our original inventory was done. And so here's a map of that same Bethany area with our consolidated maps. You can see the areas of blue represent the riparian habitat, and the upland wildlife habitat are the shades of orange in this case. And so when metro and county maps were consolidated, the county's original wildlife ha- habitat areas had areas where the, the habitat overlapped um within the, uh, within those metro riparian or upland habitat areas. So the mapped yellow areas on this map show the original wildlife habitat where there was no overlap um with the other natural resource categories, but it's still considered significant habitat. And so those green areas on the map are the open space and park areas. So a very important aspect of the project has been our focus on community engagement, and I wanted to share some information with you about that. We've been spreading the word about this project by attending various community events over the summer from Cornelius to Cedar Mill for Malaua, and also down in Tualatin. And last week, we mailed a letter to all the property owners with map Significant Natural Resources on our draft maps, letting them know about the project, upcoming events, and uh an interactive map tool um that our GIS team developed for people to use to look at their property and see where the draft resources have been identified. So we have our upcoming community forum next week, um, where we'll be sharing information, um, and also the online open house that I spoke to earlier. I also wanted to note that these are bilingual events, and all of the materials are in Spanish as well as English, and other translation services are available upon request. And we've per- um, have presented, and we're happy to present to interested community-based or organizations, and that work is ongoing. So some of our next steps, as we've shown in the earlier graphic, um, once the inventory work is complete, we'll be talking um through the ESEE um analysis to get to our development of the Goal Five program, filing the ordinance that we'll bring to the board and the hearing process um next summer. And with that, I'd like to um answer any questions that you might have, or get any comments.
If you could just go back to the prior slide?
Sure.
Um, filing the ordinance in April, and between April and August first, we have both the uh ordinance going through the planning commission and through the board, right?
That's correct, there'll be both of those opportunities, yep.
And as you have laid it out, is that a tight timeframe to go through both of those major iterations?
Well, we believe um it is a, a conservative, but also gives plenty of time for several planning commission hearings, a chance that it might um have engrossment or changes that you might, might decide to make and ultimately make our, our deadline.
Okay, great, great, that sounds good. So commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on, on this?
Complex issue, lots of maps.
Hundreds of maps.
Pretty much agree.
Sure, so the, the county maps were done at one point in time, and then all of the development, the, um, the county maps were done actually before GIS systems were in place. So we feel that the metro maps are quite a bit more accurate. And then we overlay that with aerials to get a good, um, good look at where everything is, and we've also um have different layers, more recent layers that we're looking at to, to do some comparisons, so. So I would say that metro maps are a little bit more accurate, yeah, um, in most cases, but we, we didn't do too bad.
Well, no, we've advanced our maps to take in the best of the best.
So we'll even be more advanced?
Uh huh, yes. It will incorporate all of the changes that have occurred in the last twenty years, so to speak. We're not adding new areas, but we're, we're kind of um adjusting where, where those riparian areas and, and water and.
Well, they, they were in the general scheme uh uh through twenty years ago, but as the teams talked about, they've used the most recent over, uh, what do you call them, the visual overre- overlays, the?
GIS layers.
Yes, so it's even more up to date on the state of affairs.
Well, the inventory is quite a big, big process, so it is a static map, um, and that map is, is their inventory map, and I, I'm, we haven't really discussed whether they would take on our, our adjustments or not.
Yeah.
With them.
Like government, all, yeah.
Yeah.
People aren't confused.
It would make sense, yes.
I don't know what sort of uh timeframe they would be required to adopt something more up to date than their initial, but it will certainly be available to them should they uh have a project to go through an update.
I was just gonna add, I think, I think this is an example of really just trying to sort of merge our two sets of mapping together is a large part of the exercise, and so it, it's not un, unheard of that jurisdictions, another example maybe that we all, while we regulate the FEMA-regulated floodplain, the hundred-year, what was formerly called the Hundred Year Floodplain, we've also adopted yet another layer of review here called drainage hazard areas, and so that's sort of additional area that we have decided as a county is important to also regulate development around. And this might be something similar, we're looking at both the base metro mapping areas, but also looking at areas that were mapped by the county in addition to, so if anything, I think the result of this will be that we'll be looking at more area, or certainly not less area than we would have in terms of footprint uh previously, so.
I'm fascinated by your um reviewing all the latest aerial maps as well. That's just a lot of work to, to review and pull in. Commissioners, Willie or Phi, any questions or comments?
If you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner, thank you Chair. I, I have a, Michelle, great presentation. I had a sort of a small question for you, Michelle, and, and that is a question from the slide around community engagement. You know, I am part of CPO six, and uh one of the thing I appreciate and remember from past memory is the robust conversation and discussions and around the SNR, uh, CPO six, when you were doing, not you specifically, but when, when the county was doing the last inventory assessment. And I noticed that in the community engagement pres- um, slide presentation, you said, it's written that interested presentations are available to interested parties. Is there a plan, or should I take that on to be able to communicate CPO six to reach out? Or are you planning on reaching out to CPOs to sort of ask these presentations?
So, we kind of, we took the look at that our community forum would be an opportunity to, to engage those as a larger group of the people that were interested, and we are breaking, showing the maps by community plan. But we're also happy to go to um different uh CPOs should, should they ask for a special presentation. We'd be available to do that as well.
Thank you, I'll, I'll communicate to them to reach out to you then, sounds like, um, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, go to slide eleven if you would, please. I'm a little confused as to, this, this slide says study area for updated inventory, but isn't that footprint bigger than if you go to slide thirteen?
This is an example, this is an example, using just one area north Bethany.
Okay, but it is, it is, again, going back to eleven, um, it is that area that we're looking at, okay.
Exactly.
Okay. Right.
So that Bethany one is just kind of an illustration of how we take a, the old, the old map, the Significant Natural Resources are mapped by community plan for the county, and so showing that area and how metro mapped it to just kind of get the visualization of consolidating those maps into one map. And this is our broad study area of all the urban unincorporated areas, along with the orange area, the, along with the orange areas.
So is there a definition of clear and objective? And is that achievable?
Hmm.
Cause that sounds to me pretty broad. Clear and objective, and you know, Steven can say something to me and say, yeah, this is really clear, and I'm going, I have no idea what you just said. So, clear and objective seems to me to just be a, a terminology that would be very difficult to overcome.
Well, I think that, that they really just go with examples of what clear and objective is, and say what, what things really are not clear and objective. So, um, using numbers, for example, and so distances and, and things like that are ways that we can hopefully achieve the, the correct clear and objective standard. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible and simple as possible, so that we'll meet that threshold.
Okay, just one more quick question, on riparian areas. And again, I'm kind of going back to, as I'm going, learning with the Habitat Conservation Plan with our forests, the riparian areas are a certain area where usually along water, waterways, so how, how, is there a defined width, I guess, of that riparian areas, because there certainly is in the HCP, but again, that we're talking about thousands of acres. So is there that same criteria for riparian areas in, in our Significant Natural Resources areas?
So, we have, we are using metro's maps, and so their definition, and how they have um mapped it kind of at a really high level, the thirty thousand foot level. When an, when an applicant would come in for development review, they need to go through Clean Water Services, for example, and, and they will also be. And and they will also be providing them a sample of the survey and maybe their proximity to um to the water area. And it really is not a set, set distance per se, but it's based on the slope and the embankment and the distance from the embankment. So it really can vary. From stream to stream and how wide the stream is. So it's kind of a project by project basis. So we get the real high level of where the riparian areas are through Metro and then it gets um it, but it, but the inventory says you don't have to have it at building permit. Definition. So we can kind of tweak that when development comes in.
Okay. So good luck with all that. So go ahead, Chair.
But I think the the ultimate question is, do we see the process that our team is working through? Yielding a set of information that we think as they go through it will be able to consume. In the spring for adoption in the fall. So we don't have to weigh in right now on that full set of data. But rather they wanted to make sure that we know how they're progressing through the work, what kind of data they're bringing in, what kind of analysis in order. To meet the definition of clear and objective that uh the LCDZ and LUBA might look towards in the future.
Yeah.
So. Yep, you're certainly doing it thoughtfully.
I have my wish would be someday. Things are so static in the world that we now live in that it'd be nice to think. And really adapt that you know, active happens to be all on the same page. Shame that different people have different apps. The world of tomorrow is not going to be like that. It has a map, you know, everybody will mix it between. We sit around the table and come up. Analysis, there's some kind of methodology you can hire consultants, modify your unified map.
I think that term easy is what they're doing is consistent.
Well, things have certainly changed from decade to decade to decade, both in terms of the information sets. And the technology for them to manage and review those information sets. So, yep. Alrighty, well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and and good luck with both your in-person forum on the twenty fourth, if I remember that date right, as well as the online.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, and now we're going to talk about a land use ordinance eight eight two. Uh that relates to the transportation, transportation system plan and the future extension of tile flat road. Welcome back.
Well, again, I'm Erin Wardell, Planning and Development Services Manager. And now for something completely different, we are going to have a briefing on ordinance eight eighty-two, the proposed tile flat road extension. Uh the purpose of this briefing today is to have an opportunity to preview the material for the board that you will see at the hearing next week on the twenty-fourth. And update you on conversations we've had with City of Tigard staff as well as with various community members as we've gone through the last several weeks. Um so we're here to receive any preliminary feedback in advance of that hearing and answer any questions for you. Some background as a refresher. The tile flat road extension was initially identified as a part of the concept planning process for the South Cooper Mountain Plan. And so the graphic on the screen is coming from the Cooper Mountain Planning Effort, and you can see the tile flat road extension is the dotted orange road down at the southern part of this graphic. The county did further analysis of this potential extension as a part of our Cooper Mountain Transportation Study and the Urban Reserves Transportation Studies. Both of those studies were outcomes of our fifty-year transportation future study, so identifying that we expect to see roughly sixty thousand units built around the vicinity of Cooper Mountain as a part of cities. High growth areas and as a part of infill development in the area as well. And we need to get ready for that growth by considering our transportation network and resiliency and redundancy going forward. We specifically referenced the need, the agreed upon need for the tile flat road extension in our urban planning area agreement with the City of Tigard, which was signed by the board. And by Tigard City Council in twenty twenty-one. So there's specific reference to that in there. And the tile flat road extension was incorporated into City of Tigard's River Terrace two point oh concept plan as a future study area. So this has been a long road on this particular extension. We initially had our first planning commission hearing on December fifteenth of twenty twenty-one, and that seems like it was a long time ago now. So we've had a number of different hearings. The board directed a first engrossment of this ordinance in twenty twenty-two. We held two engrossment hearings and it's been continued since then. So on the twenty-fourth, you will have your fourth engrossment hearing on the A engrossment of this ordinance. Staff will be recommending a second engrossment for you on the twenty-fourth. Want to talk a little bit more now about Tigard's River Terrace two point oh planning area. This area was brought into the Metro Urban Growth Boundary in February of this year. That was a pretty large change for this area in that it took a large portion of it out of the rural area and put it within the urban growth boundary. So made it urban, made it ready to start planning for future homes and businesses. City of Tigard is planning for about forty-five hundred housing units as well as some businesses and commercial units within this growth area. They are embarking upon their comprehensive planning effort now, and so that will take their concept plan and turn it into an actual comprehensive plan. And that involves refining a number of the assumptions that they made as a part of the concept plan and detailing their funding plans for all necessary infrastructure in the area. We expect that Tigard's planning effort will be consistent with all the provisions in our adopted urban planning area agreement. Oh, and actually I wanted to point out on this slide, we do have the concept plan graphic up there. You'll see the tile flat road extension is included in there. Um City of Tigard staff, when we met with them last week specifically requested that we make sure to add the legend onto this map, which shows that they considered the tile flat road area as a future study area. So they were also flagging that this is something that possibly needs further study.
And that was a real focal point when we went out and met with those folks out there was making sure they understood that that was, we're talking about a study area. And everything else is City of Tigard.
Correct, correct. Tigard will complete the comprehensive planning for the area within their UGB expansion.
Right.
So a lot has changed since we initially filed this ordinance. A lot has changed since we were conducting the Urban Reserves Transportation Study. Some areas came into the urban growth boundary sooner than we thought that they would. I think that we all thought the urban reserves might take a little bit longer to be brought in, and that hasn't been our experience in recent years. And so. The blue area on this graphic was brought into the urban growth boundary in February of this year. That means that our ordinance, as initially engrossed by the board, no longer needs the exceptions findings associated with the piece that's within the blue area. Additionally, because Tigard is moving forward on their comprehensive planning effort and they will be the land use authority for that area within blue. We see the benefit of changing this ordinance as filed and turning it into refinement areas. So that's our proposed change for the board. We don't need the exceptions corridors then. We don't need the exceptions findings then. We're saying something's changing in this area. We'll have more information about that in coming years. And when that happens, we can go back and reconsider our plan documents and consider what we need to have adopted in there. So the proposed engrossment will remove the goal exception analysis and strategies. It will replace the functional classification map amendment and exception corridors with the refinement areas. And it will more clearly label the proposed refinement areas. I want to talk a little bit more about refinement areas. So refinement areas are a part of our transportation system plan, objective seven point two. And refinement area definition or the objective says to identify as refinement areas where new arterial or collector connections or other improvements are necessary. But the specific location, mode and or function has not been determined. We sometimes call these study areas. We're basically putting a flag in the map saying something's going to happen here. We don't know what it is yet. We're going to study it in the future. We have eleven existing road refinement areas and eight regional trail refinement areas in our TSP today. So in this particular area, we have identified the need for multimodal street connectivity through previous planning efforts. The proposed refinement areas would allow us to do additional evaluation of the specific alignment and function of the multimodal street connections. We will continue to collaborate actively with City of Tigard as they move through their comprehensive planning effort. When they're done and they've adopted their comprehensive plan, we will update our transportation system plan to match what they've adopted for their planning effort. And then future planning efforts for the undesignated areas to the west and the south of the River Terrace two point oh areas will affect what happens there. So. Generally, I would expect that that would happen as a part of a future UGB expansion request. While the undesignated areas are pretty long-term consideration for addition to the regional UGB, it could happen within our planning horizon. So we're saying when it happens, we'll do the study that we need to do. So the specific change to our TSP would include these general designations of refinement areas. Again, these aren't intended to be alignments. They're intended to be broad. They're just showing what these areas look like and there will be a brief text description that goes along with those. There was an attachment to your work session materials that contained the proposed text for these three. There will be some revisions that you see for your packet for the twenty-fourth. Those revisions are based on conversations that we had with City of Tigard staff. We gave them the um the files and asked them to go ahead and edit and add any additional information or propose any changes to that text. So they had the opportunity to do that and we're still working out some final details with them. So you will see the proposed um engrossment text next week.
Just for reference, so the, in the River Terrace two point oh map from their concept planning. There's the upper part that's labeled west and the lower part that's labeled south. So this middle one, mountainside way extension, that would pertain to the west one and the right one to the south one.
So the southern, right.
Yeah, okay, terrific. Thank you.
Okay, does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I'm following.
So we're all on the west side of Roy Rogers Road here. We'll probably have some further conversations about their planning for the east side of Roy Rogers Road as well, um in coordination with King City. So, but not for the refinement areas.
They're both west. That part is just the southerly part and that part's the upper part.
The undesignated areas specifically that we want to have the longer term refinement areas. We have some maps that we'll show you on the twenty-fourth for the hearing.
I follow you. I'm all good.
Okay, Commissioner Willie?
So are those three refinement areas?
Yes.
Are they all combined into one?
They are three different refinement areas and we're treating them that way because we think that they're three different types of areas. Um in the middle, obviously, that is within Tigard's new urban area. So we expect that will be sorted in the next few years as Tigard finishes comprehensive planning. At that time, we'll adopt what Tigard has adopted and likely remove that refinement area from our TSP because we won't need it anymore. Um now, on the left, we have the undesignated area. That is at the intersection of Tile Flat and Shoals Ferry to the west of Vandermost. We stood there when we did the site visit with the community members. That area and then the refinement area on the other side, the mountainside way, southern extension. May come into the urban growth boundary at some point in the future, but they're rural and designated, so it's probably a pretty long way off.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
So I want to talk a little bit about some of the community concerns that we have heard, and this has been a um pretty important part of our efforts in recent weeks have been to. Really communicate more directly with some of the affected property owners and people who are really concerned about this ordinance and explain to them. The process that we've gone through and how we got here to the current staff recommendation of the refinement areas. But throughout this process, we've heard pretty consistent messaging from the community. And so that summarized here. Initially, a lot of the concerns we heard were about bringing urban reserve land into the urban growth boundary or about planning for urban growth in an area that happened rural. This has been resolved when the area came into the urban growth boundary. So there is an urban reserve out in this area anymore. It's now within the urban growth boundary. We still have the undesignated areas, of course, but those were planning for a longer timeline. There were a lot of concerns about the width of the proposed street and I think as Commissioner Willie and I experienced, there was some confusion about what the exception corridor meant and how wide the street would be. And so we had a lot of conversations on what a collector road looks like and how wide those typically are. But that's no longer a part of our ordinance because we're talking about a refinement area. We don't have a street type. We don't have a street width. We will resolve all of that when we finish our study effort. A lot of concerns about environmental impacts.
Well, and I just remember back when you and I first walked onto that property and they pointed it out, would they have a hundred and fifty foot wide?
Three hundred and seventy-five feet.
Yeah, just huge areas that they thought we were going to put a road in there that big.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So.
That was just a really good trip. I, you did a great job, Erin, and I think they really understood it better when we got done, so.
I I think it's so important to do that and have that conversation and really understand what they were thinking we meant when we said a three hundred and seventy-five foot exception corridor. We just meant we'll fit a thirty-eight foot collector paved collector roadway in here at some point in the future. We don't know exactly where, within the three hundred and seventy-five feet. But people see three hundred and seventy-five feet and that was really, really stressful for the community to think that's what we were talking about.
You'd be putting in an I five or something.
I think that's bigger than I five, actually. So, yeah, it's, it was significant and that's not what we were planning for. Um but clearly a lot of misinformation out there. So it's really helpful to go out directly and talk to the community about these things. Um there's a lot of concerns about environmental impacts of growth in general, not just with new roads, but particularly with new roads and bridge structures. So that's something that we'll continue to hear as this area is developing and being planned for. Um people were concerned about growth occurring in the area after a new street is built. Um we expect that the growth will occur within Tigard's planning area regardless because it's now in the urban growth boundary. Uh people are really concerned about housing affordability and you'll hear this with City of Tigard on the next slide as well. So people are thinking a lot about how infrastructure affects housing affordability. This is a really challenging problem. We are working on this at the county as well. We'd like to find a way to make housing more affordable. The concern is doing it on the back of necessary infrastructure or doing it on the back of our existing community members and our existing countywide transportation system. So I think this is really challenging and something we'll continue to have conversations about with the community. The community had heard City of Tigard's comments and so they brought back a lot of those concerns to us as well. People are really concerned about timing and funding, and I think it's really difficult to explain to the community why we have a twenty-year transportation system plan and that we are required by the state to think twenty years in the future. We know things are going to change twenty years in the future. We don't know what's going to happen. And so that's actually a lot of benefit of the refinement areas. It gives us that time to figure out what's happening before we adopt something very specific in our transportation system plan. Um and then finally, we heard a lot of concerns about the word exception and the state's exception process and people seeming to think that that's. Something we're not supposed to do or that we're breaking the rules in some way. So explaining that the exceptions process is in statute, it is a process that you can go through. But again, this isn't a concern anymore with the proposed um engrossment to refinement areas because we don't need the exception findings to designate the refinement area. So let that pivot over to City of Tigard concerns. So last week we had a very productive meeting with City of Tigard staff. Um we actually went directly from that meeting to a meeting with community members. And so we had Tiger Day last week of talking to City of Tigard staff. And the some of their future community members and interested community members as well. So city staff identified a lot of concerns with this planning effort. I think at the end of the day, I can summarize all of this by saying the city sees this as their future community area, their future neighborhoods. They want to be in control of the planning for it. I think that is totally understandable. They're city planners. They're representing for their city. They don't want the county to be involved in their planning effort other than as technical experts who they bring in to participate as part of technical advisory committees, which we always do in these growth areas. From the county's perspective, though, we're the regional transportation system provider. And so we're not thinking about Tigard's forty-five hundred new housing units alone. We're thinking about the sixty thousand housing units all around the Cooper Mountain area and how we preserve our existing transportation system. And plan again for connectivity and resiliency and redundancy in our system going forward. So we've had some really good thorough conversations with the city, but we just fundamentally disagree about those two things. They want to be in control of their own destiny. We want to make sure our county transportation system does what it needs to do. So this slide summarizes the points that they brought up in those meetings. Um they dispute our findings that the street is needed and justified.
Can you stop right there? So this is their, the slide with the comprehensive plan.
Concept plan, correct.
Concept plan, thank you. When they articulate feel the street connection is not needed justified, you're saying that. Even though their concept plan shows a connection of mountainside way up to Shoals Ferry Road. They're saying now, oh no, we don't really need that?
I I think they agree about that. So they want to see that north-south piece of mountainside road, but. Yeah, we can toggle back to that one. So that north-south portion of mountainside way, north of the tile flat road extension. Tigard agrees on the need for. The rest of it, they're not entirely sure about.
Yeah, this in particular.
That in particular, but also going south from there. They're still conducting analysis of whether or not they need. Both of those, what would be bridge crossings is what they told us last week. Um we're pretty concerned about that as the regional transportation system provider again, because that would mean those neighborhoods would be disconnected from each other. And particularly with the east-west portion of tile flat road, the neighborhoods off of Vandermost Road would be disconnected from. the neighborhoods off of Vandermost Road would be disconnected from the rest of their planning area. So we'll continue working with the city on that and why we feel that it's necessary from a connectivity standpoint, at least for the community.
Yeah, because there'd only be one way in, one way out.
One way in, one way out. Yeah, and there's the potential for hundreds of housing units off of Vandermost Road. If you look at what's being built across the street in Cooper Mountain, there's some really high-density developments. And Tigard staff have expressed to us that they expect to see a lot of density in this area. So we're pretty concerned about that for a variety of reasons. Okay, the city concerns. Here we go. Okay. Really concerned about environmental impacts. Of course, we just talked about significant natural resources. This is a heavily environmentally constrained area. It is going to be very challenging and probably expensive to develop. River Terrace 1 was similar. All of our high-growth areas have been similar. They all have environmental constraints. And this is a process that the city will have to work through as a part of their comprehensive planning. Again, housing affordability. I believe their concept plan estimate was $170 million for all infrastructure necessary for this growth area. So they're really thinking about how that translates into each door that they're building for these housing units. And that's a pretty significant concern, as I highlighted on the last slide as well. So we're thinking about that too, but we have to provide all the infrastructure that's necessary. They're concerned about through traffic if the roads connect to each other. But again, that's how people are going to move within this future neighborhood as well. And so we expect that to happen. Concerned about induced travel demand and increased vehicle miles traveled if we're building a new network. And then they're concerned about the opportunity cost of building some of this expensive infrastructure and then not being able maybe to build something else that they need to build or provide for more transit service or something like that. So these are all really important things to talk about. And we'll continue talking about these things with the city as they move through their comprehensive planning efforts. So with that, our next steps, again, we will have the next public hearing on October 24th. So next Tuesday, staff will seek board direction to proceed with the proposed engrossment to the refinement areas. If staff are directed to do so, the engrossed ordinance will be prepared and filed. We'll do the regular public noticing and everything else that we're required to do. You would have to have two additional engrossment hearings. So we have tentatively scheduled those for December 5th and 12th. The board could adopt the ordinance on the 12th. And as I said in the last slide, we will have ongoing planning coordination with City of Tigard and the community. So with that, we're back to our discussion question. What questions do you have or guidance for staff? Commissioner Fieb, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Chair. Erin, great presentation. I don't have any specific questions to you. I think you've answered all of my questions and I appreciate all the briefings you've provided on this topic and more specifically this ordinance. But thumbs up for me to proceed for the 24th date.
Commissioner Willie, how about you?
Well, no, I appreciate this and the fact that you and I went out there and physically walked that space gives me a lot better perception. And we've had this conversation that when you talk about though connectivity and you talk about the number of cars that with full build-out of all of these units that are going to be on Roy Rogers Road, it's going to be a major arterial similar to Cornelius Pass that we talked about yesterday. But there really isn't any exits off of that that aren't rural. So I'm thinking of what was the old Sherwood Road that's on down further south before you get Chicken Creek, you know, you head off across.
Shilshawood.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. And it's a curvy old thing ends up out on. What is, is that other road out there where that little grocery store is?
Shoals Ferry.
Yeah, yeah. Quite frankly, that's the way I go to Sherwood now. And that's becoming more and more popular to do that. But it's in rural areas, so there's really no improvements that we could do to that as an alternative access, I guess, to Sherwood and or if you're going the other way to Hillsborough, you know, on 219. So is that true? I mean, that's, that's, that's not touchable?
We can make improvements to existing rural roads. So we can do minor road realignments and of course, general maintenance, curve refinement. Yeah, safety improvements, things like that. We can't build new road connections in the rural area and rural reserve.
Yeah, no, I get that. And it's very curvy. I'm just saying with all of those concentrated people around Roy Rogers Shoals Ferry in this particular Tiger Dairy and everything else, that, that's going to really become a congested intersection and roadway. And people are going to be going elsewhere to get around that. So just a thought.
Mr. Rogers, this is your district. What are your thoughts, needs?
I don't have any needs. I won't be here on the 24th, unfortunately, for the discussion. As far as issues, there are two issues. One that's on the 24th and one that's down. The 24th one is the refinement area. I don't take any exception. I think that's good. That we've now allowed for some planning in the future. And that's always important. Never foreclose your options. You'll regret it. So the 24th is fine, but the bigger issue is really one that you alluded to. It's going to be in the future and it's kind of one that you were alluding to. In my conversations with Tigard, and Tigard has a different array of thoughts, you know, depending on who you are and how involved you are. But they're relatively new council and I see one of them coming in right now. That's great. But they're relatively new council. They're looking at, you know, a huge development. But you look at, at, when I remember when I was a mayor and Jerry maybe was saying when he was Hillsborough, you look at it from the vantage point of where you're at. I mean, that's kind of the mega center of all of what you do. When you come to the county, you're saying there's a whole bunch of those centers. And we have to have something that's workable throughout the entire county. And so you're right, there are going to be issues that are going to be further south. There's issues that corner of Roy Rogers and Shoals Ferry. I mean, I came through it this morning. I'll go back through it. It's getting to the point that it's not functioning well. And it's going to be a lot worse as all of those areas develop. So I'm stating the obvious, but there has to be some discussion with our colleagues in Tigard as well as Beaverton as well as Sherwood frankly to the south to say, what's a comprehensive view? And the comprehensive view is not to simply say, well, I'm concerned about my city, but what happens out there the county can address. Because my issue's always been in that, that area that we only, we don't have one way in and one way out. There has to be more of a network and you can't overload. Roy Rogers will be non-functional in no time at all. That corner we talked about by the, by the school is non-functional right now. And you're going to have a lot more growth, as we know, we're going out to the west. So I'm droning on a bit, but I think that, you know, next Tuesday night, I won't be here, Chair won't be here, but I have no problems or exceptions. I think taking a good ground. The future is we need to meet with our colleagues and friends in Tigard and say, it can't be that we have these fundamental differences about what a grid system will be and that the county is not going to be the one that solves all of the transportation issues that moves around. We have to have partners. And I think those in Tigard, and again, I have a councilman here. I think that they're willing to do that. I mean, we had different views and we just have to voice where our different views are. But I think that has to happen sooner than later. I mean, we're approving expansion areas, we're approving all this stuff. But we don't really have the transportation system worked out. That's always been my concern that we've not had it worked out. That's unfortunate. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. As you noted, like you, I will be out, not at the meeting on the 24th. Like you, I am comfortable with this, the plan to proceed with an engrossed ordinance and go ahead with the public hearings. I think your plan for that new engrossed ordinance is something that I can very much support. I would like to share a few other comments. I know having been an elected official dealing with land use and transportation, while not as long as Commissioner Rogers, still working towards my second decade and also having lived here for 33 years, I've seen a lot of change, specifically improvements in the transportation system here in Washington County. Thanks to a lot of hard work to plan, lay out and build out a system. We now have a super grid here in Washington County that did not exist when I bought my first house here in February of 1990. Some pieces of it were, were under construction, but a lot has improved and changed since then. And our area has grown and developed, emphasizing the point that no community area is an island. And while River Terrace 2.0 is large in scale, so was River Terrace 1.0. And each one of these larger areas is connected and part of a larger community. And everyone that lives in one of these areas is part of that larger community and travels out and about in that larger community. So what it says is your community also has to connect up with the larger whole and function within that. As you were taking us through the summary of the City of Tigard concerns around environmental impact, potential for traffic and so forth, I reminded myself that these areas of River Terrace 1.0 and 2.0 were areas that the City of Tigard was advocating for during the urban and rural reserve process. And there were some really tough choices made during that process as we were looking at what areas of land might be tapped or tagged as urban reserve to allow for vibrant communities proximate to our existing cities while also preserving the incredibly valuable farm and forest land just adjacent, right? So it's one reason why we worked together across local governments and made hard choices to designate Cooper Mountain as an urban reserve in its entirety, even though with those steep slopes and runoff and whatnot and development costs for building on hillsides. That meant that we were saving the incredibly valuable flat farm, fertile farmland just to the west of Tile Flat Road. Sorry, that's how I remember directions. So, so here we are, right? The River Terrace areas are now in the urban growth boundary. Connectivity does need to be thought about and planned through with the comprehensive planning so that there is a network, both for people who live within these areas, but also the service vehicles that need to travel into these areas. The fire trucks, the police, the ambulance, the Amazon drivers, the duct cleaners, you know, all, all of the service vehicles that need to move around. So I think you're doing the right thing. I am grateful for the incredible patience that both the city and the county planning staff have in working through these plans because the development that will happen subsequent to the concept planning, we will be living with as a community for at least a century, right? Time has shown that zoning of properties will change, but the transportation roadway systems endure those changes. So my last question of the day is, so following both this engrossment, October 24th, and I think it's really presumptive close in December for moving forward with an engrossed ordinance, but we shall see. I want to make sure that if you don't know the answer to this question already, that you'll come back to us to make sure that you have what you need from us to ensure that as you go through these planning efforts, that you have what you need from us to ensure that we'll end up with a functional county transportation system plan. Do you think you have what you need for now?
I think for now we do. I think the outcome of these planning efforts will be revealed in the next several years as we continue to work with the City of Tigard on that.
Okay, all righty. Terrific then. Sounds like we're all ready. And I know that Commissioner Trice has tried to make sure that she's in the know prior to her vacation. So I wish you smooth sailing next Tuesday.
One request, and my request is this, is that, and I don't know if all the other commissioners are aware of what might be built out in the area. If you could take and have a map, any map for future uses, that would show the number of units that are going into the River Terrace, the number of units that are going to go into King City as it proceeds on its urban growth boundary all the way to Roy Rogers. You were taking a look, Commissioner Willie's point well-taken about the number of things that are happening over in Sherwood, especially around that bend and by the, what's, I'm trying to remember, fruit stand. But that's their economic development area. They're going to put a whole bunch of, what they say is light industrial on that curve. It's on Roy Rogers before it goes in. And then if you go out beyond the school towards Tile Flat, the number of units on the backside of Cooper Mountain, if one could see that visually and not, you know, just to see the number of units, it gives, I think, with the chair, I think she was, I like what she was saying because it was, I guess, what I was saying too. If you could see that number of units, you have a very different concept of what needs to be done other than when you look and you see it just one little area. And it's not that it's little, but I mean, it's kind of like if you're painting your whole house, but the only things you're looking at is the front, you know, part of it. You don't realize you've got other sides and you've got layers and all kinds of things. So we're not really seeing a comprehensive viewpoint. I think that's what you were getting at. I mean, it's, it is, it's, it's, I can't, it's startling. I just can't believe the number of units that are going to go in that area with, in my opinion, no really functional plan right at this point to handle. It's going to be probably 15, 20,000, well, it's going to be more than that.
I think going back to the 2012 UGB expansion areas and looking forward to including Sherwood coming in at some point and probably the relatively near future, we're looking at 60,000 units in that entire crescent kind of around Cooper Mountain and on Cooper Mountain, including King City. But I like the idea of putting this map together. We did some of that work as part of the Urban Reserve Transportation Study, but I'm not sure that we made it particularly user-friendly. And so I like the idea of making this.
60,000 units, not counting, as you were pointing out, all of the traffic that comes in and out.
Well, I think, you know, just, just behind Ms. Fordell is the county map, right? And so that's where we're able to say, well, right there is the area of River Terrace 2. And we know that there are people who may live in that area but work in Hillsborough, right? Or in Beaverton or whoever, right, wherever. And so there does need to be connectivity, let alone servicing. And where I get a little tripped up in terms of what you were describing is, I don't know, I can't say for an absolute fact, but if you look at the area north of 26, right? And all, right, exactly. And so the point is, is that there needs to be connectivity. And so, and I think that's where we're coming from in reinforcing the need for connectivity, right? They've got it with River Terrace 1.0, right? They've got multiple connection points. The concept map, the concept map for River Terrace 2.0 talks about. the concept map for River Terrace two point O talks about connectivity into River Terrace one point O, so, yeah.
Quite well taken, it, it's just I don't think people understand the enormity of the thing that's going to hit us. People in our area, what I hear all the time is, I had no idea this number of units, what's going on out here? And they haven't even seen a portion of it yet, and you just can't have two or three major roads that's gonna handle it all, it's gonna fail. And same was north of twenty-six, as you've just pointed out, that it would be good as we've compared, for guys like me from the south, if I were looking up north and I were to look and you say, whoa, that's what's going on, and I had a, you know, in my mind, how many units could go in, where they might go in, I have a very different idea on how I would say we need to put these roads in for connection.
And we're having the same conversations with our other partners who are looking at growth areas, so Hillsborough,
Sure, same thing.
Beaverton, King City.
I remember when it used to be Bull Mountain we were talking about.
Yeah, we were.
Right, so same conversations continuing.
Yep, yep, growth and change.
Yes.
Yep. You're doing great, Whit.
Thank you all.
Great, thank you. Well, I believe that takes us to the end of our post agenda. Unless, of course, Mr. Roberts, you haven't gotten enough of this.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, no.
Yes.
Nope, I think he's done with us, folks.
Thank you for all your time.
We're gonna get you, we're gonna get your own chair. For my chair.
We're gonna let you off the hook, and that's it for today, folks, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Our meeting is adjourned.
I think.